Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would everybody join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. This is a public hearing being for the purpose of receiving public comment and opinion on proposed changes to the following ordinances that are listed here. Add Section 1-15.N, Chapter 5 Aqua Protection Ordinance, Chapter 51 Planning and Zoning Commission, 15.5B, 15.5C, 32.2A, 32.2B, change that to deleted, 32.4A, parentheses four, 71.5B, 84.9, 127.5, dash five, 179.2, 179.3, and 179.4. The reason being is that we're be merging the Planning and Zoning Commissions, and these ordinances need to be changed. If I could, could I ask Scott, head of the Planning Zone, would you like to make any comment on the proposed changes?
Yes, I would like to make that.
Please.
Yes, good evening. Scott Dale, 83 Long Metal Hill Road. I'm only speaking to Chapter 51, that piece of it, and most specifically to the process of filling a vacancy on the Combined Planning and Zoning Commission. So, most of what's before you with all these changes are minor edits, where it says "Planning" or where it says "Zoning," you update it to "Planning and Zoning." This one, however, I'd like, I think it'd be worthwhile for the Board of Selectmen to have some form of discussion on this piece of it. In the past, planning based on the state will, if there's a vacancy of its regular members on there, it's planning who would determine how that vacancy would be filled. It's similar to Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Board of Education. However, under, when you, under a combined planning and zoning, it's then based on the statutes I saw, it's the vacancy on such Combined Planning and Zoning Commission shall be filled in a manner prescribed by the legislative body of such municipality. That would be you guys, alright? So, just, I, my experience is on planning, so, and it's been, when we've had vacancy, we decide, you know, as a, as a commission, how that would be filled. What I've seen most often is that it'll be filled by an alternate, an alternate who might be very active and engaged with the commission. That is one area where planning and zoning would have an advantage over, say, Board of Finance or Education, they'll have alternates. So, I think also a Planning and Zoning Commission would have, be in a better position to gauge the activity or, you know, you know, the, how fitting an alternate might be to fill such a vacancy. So, this is some thoughts to consider. I don't know if there's a wrong answer in this, all this, whether Board of Selectmen determine it, or Planning and Zoning does it, but I'm just wanting to let you, ask that you consider the other side of this. Yeah, and then also, you know, if nothing is filled within, I believe it's 60 days, and still would default to the Board of Selectmen anyway. So, it's not, I just wanted to make sure that, I think it's an important thing to address. I hope you guys can at least have a discussion about it, so that you can properly prescribe it. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is this the last step in the process before the change is effective on December 1st? Tonight, is it? And then...
Yeah. Yeah, we have to adopt the changes in the ordinances to match the new planning and zoning, and that's what this is for. It just clears up a lot of the differences.
Yep.
So that they can combine and join.
So, is this an item on the agenda? I don't remember.
It is.
Yeah, it's first thing on the...
Yeah. One thing we do, still need to do, is set the meeting for that first meeting after the election.
Right.
Planning, what used to be first and third Thursdays of every month, zoning's always been second and fourth, so we have to figure out which one that's gonna be, especially that first one, so...
So, during our regular meeting, we have to decide about the vacancies, like he just said, is that what we're doing?
No, right now, it is by appointment by the Board of Selectmen. We would have to specifically try to make a decision to allow the new Planning and Zoning Board to appoint their own members, and we can have that discussion during...
But we don't vote till the regular meeting?
Till the regular meeting, right. This is just a hearing for anybody who wishes to make comments.
It does fall under, it does fall under Chapter 51 on your list of things that you're addressing, and that's where it would fall. So, yeah, and I think it's something that's worth at least an open, open and direct discussion.
I take it you're in favor of doing what the Planning Board used to do?
That's from my experience, yeah, yeah. That's from my experience. You know, and I think the fact that there are alternates, though, gives us, gives Planning and zoning an advantage. That's usually where most such vacancies come from, yeah.
And you're comfortable with all the other changes? I know Curtis...
Yes, oh yeah, I, yes.
You worked on it, I know Curtis worked on it.
I did, yes, I did. And most of it's minor, and the rest are, are fine.
Most is housekeeping.
Yes.
Just to make sure we get it right, the names are right.
Right.
Okay, great. Any other, anything else you'd like to give us, Scott?
That's all I have, thank you.
So, there's seven members on this newly merged board, right?
Mm-hmm.
And how many alternates?
Three.
Is this a hard fast on the language for the updated charter, or is this in the charter already? Fifty-one dash two. I don't, I didn't bring the charter to me.
Well, the thing is, is that, right now, you still have a Planning Commission, so if there was a vacancy in the Planning Commission, it would, it would be filled, you know, it would be filled by the Planning Commission.
Right.
Regardless of what the, what it says there.
Yeah, until the new board takes it back.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, the state determines that.
Right.
If I recall, the language on planning and education and finance is a specific item in the charter.
Yeah.
So, if we changed it in, well, we'll talk about it, but if we changed it in the ordinance and not changed it in the charter, we're gonna create a conflict.
Yeah.
So, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
But you can't change the charter.
No, can't change the charter once we have a charter revision.
But it says here, in accordance with the town charter, effective 1 December.
Yeah, I don't think that when the charter was changed, it was, at least when it was voted on, that was not part of that specifically.
Yeah, because we brought this before referendum, and the referendum approved it, so that...
But it didn't even address vacancies.
No, it doesn't address vacancies. Okay. Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott or concerns? We can just, we'll just...
Just public comment.
Okay, great. Does anybody else wish to make comment? Okay, any comments from the board?
I like the idea of the alternate. I mean, it makes sense.
Okay, so, having no further business, I would accept a motion to adjourn this hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
There are seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great, and we'll talk about it again when we get to our meeting. I don't think that's a record. That's in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Members present are Ms. Tara Carr, Selectwoman, Bob Beldon, Selectman, and Steve Dunfer, Selectman. Before public comment, would you like to make your motion?
Yeah, I'd like to just make a motion on the agenda to move a couple of things around.
Okay.
I'd like to move Item B, the monthly financial update, to the last item in New Business, and Item G in New Business to be the first item in New Business.
Okay, I will make, I will second that motion. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, public comment. Do we have, who do we have?
Diane Seivo.
Yeah, if you could, just tell us your name and address.
Hi, my name's Diane Seivo. I live at 13 Abbey Road in Brookfield. I just came tonight really to follow up on a letter that I sent you about a week ago regarding what I felt was a issue with mainly safety for motorists and pedestrians in town, about people who panhandle or beg for money at, mainly at the intersection of Federal Road and Kenwood Lake Road. People particularly who stand in the median on Federal Road.
Dangerous.
You know, it's extremely dangerous, you know, that median's probably two feet wide, and I don't have to tell people how busy that intersection is. They cross, they have to cross the street to get to it, and there's no crosswalks there, there's no walk signs. I did some investigating to find other towns in Brookfield who passed ordinances that prohibit, some of them in specific places in their towns, any kind of panhandling, and their reasons that they cited are all based on the health and safety of their citizens, because they've had, they, they all cited issues that they had in the past that, it came under people's freedom of speech, but, but health and safety seem to trump everything else. So, what I, the reason I came tonight was just to ask for perhaps further investigation. Our neighbor, New Milford, has an ordinance that prohibits panhandling.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I, we don't usually do this, but I will give an update. We do have a panhandling and solicitation ordinances, and the interpretation in the past has been that we cannot go on state property and First Amendment rights and things like that, so we've talked to the state, we've talked to the town attorney. Our police officers, and I've asked the Chief of Police to implement this, are asking these people to stop, to tell them, "You're not allowed to do this here on state right-of-ways, in particularly that median strip, and that you must move on, and if they do not, they will be fined, and if they come back, they will be fined." So, we have a good update for that, so...
Oh, okay.
Thank you. We've been working on this for a few months, it's been an issue, and the issue before was we didn't think we had the right to go onto state property, which Federal Road is a state road.
Yeah.
But the interpretation has changed, after talking to town attorney in the state, so the Chief of Police is here. He has his officers telling these people, "This is dangerous, you can't be here."
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, 'cause I had called the police previously, and we were told, they told us then that they couldn't do anything.
Yeah, yeah, well, we've gotten an updated interpretation, because this has gotta stop. It's not safe.
Yeah, someone's gonna get hit by a car at some point.
Oh gosh, yes, okay. I usually don't talk during public comment, but...
Okay.
I'll give you that update, 'cause we just got it on Friday.
All right.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Carrie Swift, 25 Pocono Ridge Road. I don't have a lot tonight, I just wanted to thank the three of you, and our town attorney as well, for, for people that don't know, we, the, most people probably do, but in case you don't know, Iroquois has gotten, which is really TC TransCanada Energy, and Berkshire Hathaway, they make a nice little company name, has gotten a preliminary hearing, a preliminary permits from DEEP to put their two compressor stations in, and what we've, we don't like the whole project, I think, and a safety means, but as far as a pollution means, you know that we have said, there is a solution to not be dumping out all this pollution, as in electric motors, instead of these hugely polluting gas motors, and I don't think people realize how much pollution, I mean, you guys have seen the permit, you know, but it really will be one of the, if not the, largest emitter of greenhouse gases in Connecticut when they're finished, and that's 24/7 all the time. So, just wanna say thank you for your work on this, and thank you for the great reply to them, because we requested petition from the town, you have 25 signatures, we had, what, 85 or something? There's a lot, yeah, 82. And they objected to things like, "Oh, two of the people were Newtown residents." Well, you know what, it's a regional issue. This is polluting Danbury, this is polluting Newtown, it's polluting everyone. And we had a petition also from our Stop the Compressor group, and then Save the Sound did a petition as well. They objected to all of them, because they wanted each signature certified, it's kind of ridiculous. The fact that they're putting this in the middle of our residential neighborhoods, next to our middle school, and this is gonna go on for how many years, that they are gonna be a huge emitter of these gases that cause asthma, heart attacks, this is not debatable. This will cause health effects, this will harm people's health, there's no debate on that. The thing is, how many and how much, how many people will, you know, harm, how many people will have heart attacks because of it? It's hard to prove a negative, but they know that these gases, and the science keeps continuing to prove how much this pollution further impacts health. So anyways, the fact that they will not even object to us having a hearing to have our say and our word on this, and also thank you to all the people who, you know, standing up as a town is a good thing, that sign the permits, that sign the petitions, and also, they got almost 200 comments, you know, people wrote in formally to DEEP, almost 200 comments against this, so, you know, I'm very appreciative of that, standing up as a town, and the fact that they actually object to, just having a hearing, come on, right? It's, it's terrible. And the fact, and the bigger fact is that they won't do electric motors, you know, they can try to hide these in nice little barn-looking things, but we have the FLIR camera footage, we have their own permits, and we know, and there's also been all kinds of studies on the pollution and what the health effects of these compressor stations. So, the fact that they can't spend, you know, a couple million extra and take care of it when they have these huge profits, and actually make our health, safety priority, and, you know, is bad. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Correa. I just wanted to inform the public, I gave a formal notice to the board detailing documented ethics cover-up sanctioned by our town attorney.
I'm sorry, can you give us your name, full name and address?
Sure, Andrew Correa, 45 West Whiskney Road. So, I just want to inform the town, I gave a formal notice detailing a documented ethics cover-up sanctioned by our town attorney, and it's not on your agenda tonight. Despite a request from the sitting Selectwoman, this is a profound failure of your duty to the public, but I also want to talk to you about Agenda Item 10A, the appointment of Christina Zimmerman to the Youth Commission. Over the weekend, I provided the Board of Selectmen evidence-based notice detailing a pattern of deception that makes her appointment indefensible. The facts are, Ms. Zimmerman's bio-brief claims a minor in statistics on her transcript, she does not have one, the class, she had one class that was essentially 10th grade math. This is a pattern of deception. She had email, I provided emails where she had discussed leveraging a claim that she double majored in statistics to be considered for a critical 5th grade math long-term substitute position. Third, the bio-brief deliberately omits her role as, you know, treasurer for the DTC for most a decade, when she shows, you know, a ton of great, really great volunteering, but that's a pretty profound thing to overlook when she's about to go and run a candidate forum within three weeks if she gets appointed. Essentially, so, it really doesn't matter if you're on the Youth Commission, if you have a statistics major, which is kind of a bizarre reason to actually put in, put that on a bio-brief. It wasn't a typo, this is an original document that she created. She was also found out to have misrepresented her background to the school, she was aware that people were aware of that. You know, to intentionally lie on something like that makes you wonder. It's, like I said, it's not about her math skills, it's about a question of character. This is somebody that's gonna work with our kids, and she knowingly falsified essentially a resume, and that is like the number one reason why you would fire somebody for a job, that on a resume, they falsify their, their background. Well, it doesn't matter what her math skills are, it matters whether you can trust her. So, I urge you to reject this appointment, and I also urge you to address things like, you know, not covering up for Wendy Youngblood, who knowingly lied under oath in her ethics hearing. You know, not let Rosa Fernandez get away with, you know, coming in and having a secret meeting that Lisa Temple pulled her in. In the end, you guys appointed her, and you had ethics complaints against her, against yourself, and you likely knew about Wendy Youngblood's ethics complaint when you appointed those two. Thank you.
Laura Mascolo, 5 Muirwood Court. It's okay, start, continue with this, okay?
Yeah.
I respectfully request that the proposed cell tower at 42A Hidden Brook be required to undergo a full environmental assessment under the National Environmental Policy Act. This site lies within the Lake Lilinua watershed and near multiple existing towers. This creates cumulative RF exposure environment that has not been properly evaluated for public health, wildlife, or water quality impacts. The area already hosts towers on Carman Hill, Pocono, Vale, and Federal Road. Adding another tower in this cluster will further elevate RF emissions without any cumulative impact analysis. The U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit Environmental Health Trust v. FCC rules that the FCC's 1996 RF exposure standards are outdated and incomplete, failing to account for environmental effects, wildlife, and children's health. Until those standards are updated, this project should not be excluded from environmental review. The applicant's claim of a coverage gap is unsubstantiated. FCC broadband maps show our neighborhood already has reliable service. The few unserved parcels cited are within existing tower paths. The applicant failed to provide drive test data, the industry standard, for proving actual coverage deficits. Without evidence of need, this tower represents unnecessary infrastructure that would degrade local environmental quality and property values. Our home itself is only 1,400 feet from the proposed tower, and 11,000 feet off the end of our cul-de-sac, and one of the most beautiful country roads in this town. Research and property appraisal confirms that proximity to large towers results in reduction in residential property values due to visual, aesthetic, and perceived health concerns. HUD classifies such facilities as an adverse neighborhood influence. Beyond economics, the tower would significantly alter the natural wooded skyline of our area, diminishing the scenic character of our community. I respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen, Zoning, Wetlands, and FCC, please review the application for the proposed tower. At a minimum, require a full environmental assessment to evaluate watershed integrity, wildlife health, visual impacts within the Lake Lilinua community. We truly love our lake community, and we want to preserve the beauty that makes us so special to live there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Michelle Connor.
your support in opposition of the cell tower at 42A, 42A Hidden Brook Road. In our grassroots movement, we're, we're starting to coordinate efforts with the community. We have a petition going around that's starting to gain a lot of momentum. So, you know, the petition discusses the redundancy of service in Brookfield. We already have adequate wireless coverage following the recent installations of the towers at Vale Road and Pocono Road, as well as other neighboring town towers. The proposed facility does not address a significant service gap within our town. Instead, it appears to be designed primarily for the service of neighboring town of Bridgewater, so it's not for Brookfield residents. As a result, a tower would put an unnecessary burden on Brookfield neighborhoods. The placement of this tower would impose unnecessary environmental, aesthetic, and property value impacts on Brookfield residents while offering little to no tangible benefit to our community. Misalignment with Brookfield's needs and plannings. This project prioritizes the infrastructure needs of a different town at the expense of Brookfield neighborhoods and open spaces. Our community should not be required to shoulder the negative effects of a facility that serves interests, interests outside of our borders. For these reasons, the petition and the people that sign it will respectfully urge the Connecticut Siting Council and Brookfield Town Leadership to deny Homeland Towers and Selco Partnership Verizon Wireless proposed facility at 42A Hidden Brook. Brookfield residents deserve thoughtful, fair, and community-driven planning that prioritizes our town's well-being and preserves the character of our neighborhoods. We'll be, so like I said, we'll be gathering our grassroots efforts to oppose this tower. We'll be doing that through social media, getting hopefully up to 1,000 signatures on the petition. We'll also be watching for the docket to show up on the Connecticut Siting site.
There yet.
It's not there yet, there, but once it is, we will also be providing them with letters opposing that as public comment and attending their meetings as well. So, hopefully, you know, we can have your support in the form of a letter against this tower to the Connecticut Siting Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Oh, that's me. Other than it's right in my backyard. Yeah, I will speak. Speak up above my head, I don't worry about anything, because it's right in my backyard. Oh no, he should come up. I go back there all the time, because you're at my spot. I have a picture that I was in a... Sir, so we'd like to have your comments on tape, so if you can come to the microphone.
Michelle Connor, 7 Muirwood Court.
Hello, Mr. Connor.
Hi. So, I live right, so as I face this way, the road goes up and out, Muirwood Brook, over, it'll be on my direct right, about 1,000, under 1,000 feet away, 175 feet tall. It's one of the most beautiful pieces of wooded area in Connecticut. It borders not only two parks, so this shit is really a third park. It's part of the whole park system that goes down to Lake Lilinua and over to the high school. That's how far it goes, Williams Park and the, and the other park you can think of right now. So, that's right in the middle of it. So, you're gonna have this 175-foot tower in my backyard, it's gonna impact definitely property values, which I wouldn't be happy about, would you? If you had one in your backyard? I wouldn't. What about the wildlife? Not one study. There's bald eagles' nests all over there. There's wildlife galore, fox dens, everything. There's still water pools that should be protected, vernal pools. So, a environmental study at the least is required. If it was your backyard, wouldn't you have one? I would. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it? Okay. We'll move on to the...
Could I make a motion to move the cellphone tower item number 8A to the top of the agenda, since we have quite a few residents here?
You mean, update?
Yeah, the update.
Sure, I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So, I'll give an update. Homeland Tower has not applied for a permit as of today. I talked with a representative of Homeland Tower today, he did not tell me when they were going to apply, but he told me that they were going to apply, and that if there was anything that town, they could do to help the town, they would be accommodating. I think what we need to do is understand the control the town has over this process. It's zero. The entire process is controlled by the Connecticut Siting Council. They specifically, when the laws for the Connecticut Siting Council were written, take out all our zoning, all our planning, all our own rules and ordinances. The only entity that can approve or deny a tower is the Connecticut Siting Council. That's who we have to go after. That's where you go. Now, if there are two conditions that tower builder needs, one is, they have to be able to prove that there is a need for the service. They have shown us maps, and they've sent them to the Connecticut Siting Map Council, maps from ATT, Verizon, T-Mobile, that show that northeast section of Brookfield does not have enough coverage. Well, they've got that, that's what they're saying. Then the second thing is they have to find a property. They have found a property. They found someone who will lease them that property. They do not take into, the Siting Council has said this numerous times, they do not take into consideration the 1996, because they have the 1996 FCC rule about emissions and the levels of emissions that are not harmful to humans, they will be under that, right? So, that doesn't count. Now, I know this isn't what you wanna hear, but this is the facts... They do not take into, the Siting Council has said this numerous times, they do not take into consideration the 1996, because they have the 1996 FCC rule about emissions and the levels of emissions that are not harmful to humans, they will be under that, right? So, that doesn't count. Now, I know this isn't what you want to hear, but this is the facts of the case. The only entity that can stop them, and I urge everyone who is against the cell tower to go to the Connecticut Siting Council, keep on pushing them, keep on watching. We will tell everyone in town when they file their permit. Then we have 90 days for, to file with the Siting Council for comments and all of those sorts of things. We can and will request a hearing. We will request a hearing in person. They have been doing Zoom hearings so far, but we will request, we can't answer questions from the audience. So we will push as hard as we can on this, but understand the only people that can make this change is the state legislature to give back some power to towns to at least begin to control this process. We have no control whatsoever.
So that's where I would beg to differ because, and you and I have had this conversation before, and I feel like we've been talking about this for eons, especially with when, before the Vale Road Tower went up, but Senator Blumenthal actually pushed back on the FCC 1997, I think it is, guidelines in 2017 or 18, I think. And he never got an answer back from the Supreme Court. So, we're still in waiting. We need to go back to Blumenthal and figure out where he is in the process.
Uh, we do.
And we also need to push back because the Siting Council isn't an elected body.
No, it is not.
Okay? So they shouldn't have a single dog in the fight. And when it comes to situations like this where it affects 18,000 residents and beyond, you know, we can't just sit here and take it. Like, we have to do something. That is our duty. That is why the three of us were duly elected, and it says in the charter, that is our job to protect the residents of this town. So, I don't appreciate you just sitting here and saying, nothing we can do about it because the Siting Council are a bunch of bullies.
That's not to say that we are not advocating with the Siting Council and pushing hard. We should be pushing our state legislators, we should be pushing Chris Murphy, and Dick Blumenthal, and Johanna Hayes, and all the congressmen. Those are the entities that can enact laws that will change the powers that the Siting Council have. I'm just stating the fact. The Siting Council has had over 600 applications. They have approved over 590 of them immediately. About 10, they've asked for small changes and then approved those. They have not, as far as I know, and the records I see, ever turned down an application for a cell tower. Because if they can prove the need and they can prove they have a site, they can build. Now, when they do build, they have to follow all our zoning. Right now, we can advocate, and I ask everyone to advocate with your state legislators and with the governor and with our elected leaders who have the power to make this change. We, as a board, do not have the power to force them to make a change.
But we can advocate, right?
Absolutely, and we're going to.
I think advocating takes a number of flavors, right? One might be pushing, right? Pushing Blumenthal's a great idea. I heard tonight that there was a request that we demand an environmental impact statement, and I think we can demand an environmental impact statement because it is surrounded by parks down there. I was on that street just the other day, it's beautiful down there. And so, I think there's some, and much like we did with the compressor station, right? We don't have authority on that either.
But we're still advocating.
But yet, we were very active in our advocacy, so I think it's something we can do.
Yeah, absolutely, we should and will. We should and will do that.
I'd also think, I think we should probably have some kind of a special meeting and invite the leadership of the town of Bridgewater to come and talk and see where their head is on this.
Their head is, it's not my town, I'm happy. Curtis came to our town meeting on that, when they had an informational meeting that Homeland sent their lawyer to, and he answered every question that was there, and Curtis got up and he spoke at it, and he's saying, I don't have a dog in this fight right now. It's not going in my town. Now, will he help us? Will he advocate with us? I think he would. And I will ask him. He is a good guy, he's an honest guy, smart guy.
So what about a moratorium or putting something in place that just says, no more cell towers, we're taking a big pause, just like the moratorium on development?
No, it's the same as federal law trumps state law, state law trumps local law. We can put any moratorium we want in, they will just ignore it. They don't have to follow our laws. They have been accept, I'm sorry ma'am, we can't do a back and forth. They, they have the power to build a cell tower. And I, and I know people want to sugarcoat this, but we can't. The facts are the facts, and I'm just gonna tell you the facts as they are. Do we like them? No. Should we have some control? Yes. It's inconceivable to me that something can happen at town, like a gas compressor or a cell tower, and we get absolutely no say in it. This gas compressor is gonna put out an extra 14.9 tons of pollutants every month, and we get no say. And they won't even consider using electric compressors right now. So, it's a hard, it's a battle, and we're gonna, we're gonna advocate for our residents. We are.
So Steve, do, let's talk about timeline a little bit. You've been, I know you've been exploring this and trying to understand it. We had, you said something about 90 days. Is that 90 days for us to ask for attention, or is that 90 days to decide?
No, no, that's 90 days to file with the Siting Council. My understanding, objections, concerns, requests for a hearing, all of those sorts of things, they have a 90-day period.
Yeah, okay.
Right? And then they will, they have up to six months to set a hearing?
Yep.
I think that's their rule, and they usually like to do it by Zoom. We would prefer to have it in person, like they used to do.
Definitely wanna do it in person.
Yeah, I'd much prefer in person.
Yeah.
Same thing with DEEP. Yeah. Okay. Is there anything else we want to discuss? So we will keep the town apprised of everything the town is doing to act on this. We will tell you all what we're doing, and we're just gonna be flat-out honest, what we can and can't do. And I'll tell you, advocating is great. I think with the gas compressor, we have a lot of people who are going after DEEP, are petitioning them, and it gets, it gets almost, in my opinion, absurd. So, they were granted, just for example, the gas compressor, because I know you guys want to leave, you don't want to sit here. The gas compressor was given a permit. We objected to the permit. Then they objected to our objection, right? And then we objected to their objection. DEEP is there to protect the residents of this state, and I don't think they're doing it at all. They can require electric compressors and keep an additional 14.9 tons of pollutants out of the air. This seems to me a no-brainer. If your job is to protect your residents, why aren't you requiring this?
So, so one of the things that worked really well with the gas compressor station is that we worked hand-in-hand with the advocacy group. And this, then we worked separately but together, if I, if I were to describe it. We, as a board of selectmen, wrote numerous letters and took stands and contacted people and did a lot of that. We also had an advocacy group who was doing the same thing, right? And we worked together. In fact, some of the letters were drafted together.
Yes.
And I think there's, that came up with some creative ideas on how to do things. And I think there's an opportunity to here to have a kind of an ongoing working group with those of you who spoke with the Board of Selectmen on what can we do? What are the levers we can push? How do we go? We got, we're gonna have a window of time that's 90 days long, right? And we gotta push every button we can in that window.
There's something called the FCC NEPA and EPA. I don't know exactly what that acronym stands for, but it's something that I'm being told that we should absolutely push for and require a mandate that more analysis is done. And it's, the Children's Health Defense has done these in other parts of the country before, and they've come to a screeching halt. It's been very successful. For some reason, the Siting Council in other parts of the country haven't been able to proceed when the FCC NEPA has come back with all these findings. So, I can get more information on that.
That would be helpful.
But I think we should definitely pursue that.
I agree. I'll look it up. I'm not aware of the NEPA rule.
It's NEPA?
NEPA?
That's the acronym for it.
Okay. But anyone who wants to work with the town, please come to us. We will work with you, we will support you, we will write letters, we will advocate just like we did with the Iroquois Gas Compressor. We'll do everything we can just to advocate for our residents. That's our job. Okay? Any, any other comments?
I think, I think, I think a good first step, because you know him, would be to call Dick Blumenthal and just pick his brain.
I will call him.
Right? Just pick his brain on where, because he did take a stance against it.
Oh, 100%. He's still waiting for an answer.
Yeah, so I think we could really, we could start there with a discussion with him. Maybe it's not all of us, but at least Steve, you could go with that debate. Have that discussion, see what levers he, he's pushing at the federal level that might help us here.
He can at least give me an update on where he is.
Yeah. Let's start there. We got a little time to do it.
Yeah, I know Dick pretty well. Okay. Great.
This is good. This is good discussion.
Thank you. Okay. Any further comments, discussions? Thank you, everyone, for coming. Okay, now we move.
You're up to...
Okay. Announcements. Coffee with the Community will be on the 25th of October from 9:00 to 10:00 at the New Brookfield Market in...
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Public hearing motions.
Oh, public hearing motion, sorry. Public hearing motion. We had a public hearing at 6:30 this evening. I would make a motion that the board approve the proposed changes to the ordinances as written and discussed at the public hearing on October 6, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Derek Carr, any discussion on that? Scott Dale had asked us to consider one point, and that was to have the new planning and zoning appoint their own members, right? I don't think that is what happens in most towns. State law requires planning and Board of, and Board of Finance to appoint their own members. That's correct, right, Tom?
That's correct. And the issue here is that when the charter was revised and the charter questions were sent forward, there was not that collateral provision to insert back into that section that now just says, planning in the charter can pick its own. That never included, planning and zoning can pick their own. So then, the default position is the Board of Selectmen appoints replacements for all others.
So if we wanted to go down that road, we would have to, we'd have to do a charter change.
We'd have to do a charter change, so...
Not an ordinance change.
Correct. Yeah. So, we're kind of caught here. We just have the Board of Selectmen appoints, and then if we ever have another charter revision, we could take that out.
We could put it on the charter revision list.
Can the ordinance include a stipulation that this will only last until the next charter revision?
I wouldn't advise on that because either the charter's revised or it's not. So when the charter's revised, then that will automatically change. Once the charter says, planning and zoning can pick their own replacements, then that's what will happen from that adoption forward. So there's no need to put anything in the ordinance.
Well, there's something in the ordinance that specifically says the Board of Selectmen selects, so we would have to remove that once the charter's updated.
That was previous language in there, so it just, it was changed to make it consistent with where we are.
Do we need that language in the ordinance?
I don't know which section that was.
51.
It says, on the composition of planning is on 51-2, it says, in the event of any other vacancy on the Commission of Board of Select, it shall appoint, right? So it's specific here, it would be okay to, should we make that silent?
No, once the charter's changed, the charter will trump that provision, and then we can change that provision to make it match.
Okay, that's, that's an easy thing.
Who's gonna remember to do that?
Yeah, Steve, are you keeping a list of what should, of things that come up?
Put that on the list. Yeah, there are a number of issues that charter revision, that keep coming up. Small things for the most part, but we'll put that on there. So we don't have any room to move here, they have to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. At the hearing, Scott Dale spoke eloquently. That was the only concern he has. He's the current chair of the Planning Commission. Kurt Timmerman has weighed in. He's the chair of the zoning. He has said that he is comfortable and reviewed all the changes and updates to the ordinances. So I think that we're in good shape and that both boards are comfortable with the changes and the updated ordinances, and Scott was the only person commenting at the hearing.
And we'll take that under consideration at the next charter revision.
Yeah. So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All of us in favor? Aye?
No.
You're a no? Okay. 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 Presentations, we don't have any this month. Our announcements, Coffee with the Community will be October 25, 9:00 to 10:00. Getting a little deja vu here. And at the, at the New Brookfield Market in Deli located at 277 Whiskaneer Road. Again, we urge people to sign up for Spotlight Newsletter and the Everbridge Emergency Notifications at the town website. Vacancies on Boards and Commissions, the Building Code of Appeal, Code of Appeals is looking for one member. The Commission on Aging is looking for one member and one alternate. The Energy Advisory Board is looking for one member. Inland Wetlands Commission is looking for one member and two alternates. The Police Commission is looking for one alternate member. The Still River Greenway Ad-Hoc Committee is looking for one member. The WPCA is looking for two alternate members. And the Youth Commission is looking for three alternate members.
And one adult vacancy, right?
And one? I don't, I don't think, no.
Well, why are they looking to appoint Zimmerman if there's no adult vacancy?
No, it says, it says as a member.
Oh, is that, is that one? I'm sorry.
It might have been my mistake, I might have taken it off hastily without realizing.
So... So would we be appointing her as a member or as an alternate?
Let me, let me look at my list.
We'll come back to that.
We'll come back to that. We can come back to that. We're putting the monthly financial date off, so we move then to new items. The Public Works Highway Department...
No, 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 we moved she up first. Parks and Rec.
Oh, no, we moved the Parks and Rec. Ms. Laura Murphy, Director of Parks and Rec, would you come up to the, I'm sorry, you all right? Parks and Rec. Okay. Let me make the motion first, and then we'll ask Laura to answer any questions. I make a motion that the board approve the Parks and Recreation Commission's requests in accordance with Ordinance 46, Section 5I, to expend $107,617 from the fund balance of the self-sustaining account for the purchase of a new boat launch dock and kayak launch ramp. These monies will be transferred into the Capital Nonrecurring Fund for reporting purposes, with any unspent funds after the project is completed being returned to the self-sustaining fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, got two seconds, I'll take Tara's second. Okay. Would you give us an overview? I know we've been talking about this for three or four years. Would you give us an overview on the process and why we're doing this?
Yeah, absolutely. So our docks are over 20 years old right now. They're all rotting out and were deemed unusable moving forward. So this is more of a necessity at this point if we want to continue using our launch. The addition with this launch is also a kayak launch, and that is also going to be ADA compliant. So that's another addition to our park, which we're really excited about. The material is also going to be aluminum, and the top will be, I'm not sure if you're familiar with like those EZ docks or like a PVC material, so that'll be nice to, nice and easy to clean. We won't have to worry about, in the past, they had lifeguards painting them, and it's just...
Splinters.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't work very well, and at, at this point, they just have to get replaced if we want to use that amenity again next year.
And the docks that we currently have are in, if I can put it, very poor shape.
Yeah.
We've been jury rigging and band-aiding these for a few years. This first came up about two years ago, is that right?
Yeah.
On the docks?
Yes.
I think it came up when you were...
Oh, it did. I think it was on next priority, like my very first year.
Right, right. We're at three.
Never made it.
Never made it.
No, so that's why we want to use at least these, these funds because they will take that off of our...
And it should be noted that the Parks and Rec Commission, when they have any money left over from a program, if they do a program and they charge $100 for the program, and it costs, the cost for the program are 90, the $10 goes into the self-sustaining fund. The purpose of that self-sustaining fund is to do capital projects. So this is from funding that is already within the Parks and Rec Department. I think this is a very good use of those funds. Bob, do you have any concerns, questions?
I have a couple of, no, I don't have any concerns, I just have a couple of questions. The 107,000, how much, how big is the fund? Does that drain the fund, or is that a percentage of the fund?
No, that's about a third of our fund currently.
Okay, so you still have some room to maneuver if something were to come up. Okay. And then the second is bidding process? This one out to bid?
It did.
And how many bidders were there?
One.
One bidder?
Yes.
Okay.
Which are the, the general, well, it's Tucker, and they actually are the company that we've been working with for the past more than I know, over 20 years, yeah.
You know them.
They're, they've been in business for seventy-five years. We use them for removing our docks, installing our docks. Whenever we have an emergency, they come. If we call first thing in the morning, they'll be there. So we've had a great relationship with them.
No other respondents, so.
No.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You're done. Bob, how many residents do we have that have permits to use the docks or the launch?
There were ninety-four passes bought this year.
And what do they pay?
So for a trailer, it is a hundred forty. For on-the-top car, it's seventy dollars. For a day pass, it's twenty-five. For seniors, for a trailer, it's eighty-five, and for seniors on top of your car is fifty.
Is the footprint of the new dock going to be the same?
It's larger. So you can actually, what's really nice about this, I'm not sure if you've experienced people complaining, but sometimes there's an issue with ferrying your vehicle because they're waiting for someone else to use, to get in and out of the lot. So there's actually two spots where you can put your vehicles while you're going to get your trailer, so it's not just kind of hanging off on the side. And the kayak launch is on the backside of it, so there's a safety. It wouldn't be a safety concern because they're going on the back and out and around, whereas the boats would be coming in before the beach.
And then my final question, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Is, so, just thinking out loud here, but is there any room for like parking our, do we call it a fireboat or the police boat, or what do we have?
Yeah, the fireboat is at Candlewood Shores at the dock by their beach, right now, the fireboat. Candlewood's fireboat. It seems to work really well. I don't think we've had any problems with that. I think we would have been told. I don't know if this, this dock couldn't hold the fireboat. That's about a twenty-four-foot boat.
Yeah, and my only, my only concern, I don't know if it would be a concern, but there's no like security. So if you're parking a boat there, we don't have any cameras right now. So I don't know if something was to happen, that we would track that.
Keeping our town equipment at the shores is that that's a private community.
Yeah.
Even, even using their roads to get there to access our boat. I'm just trying to see if there's a way to put our equipment on our property.
We can look into that. I haven't heard any concerns from either the fire company, Candlewood, or from Candlewood Shores, and there hasn't been any issues that I've heard of, but we'll check into it. That's probably not a bad idea.
I just, I think if we're gonna, you know, first of all, we're spending a hundred and seven thousand dollars of their money. Maybe we wait till the next budget cycle if we're going to try to do more.
Well, this is not coming out of the town budget. This is coming from the self-sustaining fund that Parks and Rec has.
That's what I'm saying.
And the Parks and Rec Commission has the authority to spend that money. They need our approval, but they have the authority to spend that. So it's not a budget item. It won't really hit our budget, except to put it in capital non-recurring.
And it did go through the capital process this year, and this was the agreed solution with the Capitol Committee and.
That they would take it from this fund?
Yeah, yeah. We had that discussion. Okay, great. Any other concerns or issues?
I had no issues. I just, I just had questions, that's all.
Yeah, I think this is a good use of this funding, and Laura, thank you for putting that together. I really appreciate it. We have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further questions, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
I'm abstaining.
You're a no? Okay, so that carries two, one. Okay, thank you very much.
Go to the Board of Finance, or is this, are we the final approval? Just out of curiosity.
That's probably a Tom Beecher question, but the ordinance, the ordinance says it's this Board of Selectmen, does not mention the Board of Finance.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's coming from this fund.
Yeah, because it comes from the fund, not from the town.
It's not a supplemental.
Yeah.
That was my question.
You agree with that, Tom? That was our understanding of it. Okay, so we then move on to.
Now we're Public Works.
Now we're back to the Public Works. So new items. I will make the motion. I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve and authorize the First Selectmen to sign the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Public Works Department. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bob, second. Any questions, concerns, issues on that? I will say that this basically calls for an increase in the salaries. That's the big item of three point seven five, three point five, and three point five percent over the next three years, the life of the contract. That is, I think, a very reasonable and fair settlement.
And that was settled in mediation, if I understand.
Yes, it was finally settled in mediation. The Public Works Union did not want to settle. They wanted to go for more money. We then went into mediation, and we shared the cost of mediator, and we were able to settle this very amicably. And I think most of the guys in the Public Works Union are comfortable with it and think it's a fair contract. But yeah, we didn't have to go to arbitration.
And they, and the unions approved it.
Yeah, unions approved it last Tuesday. They had a meeting. So the only thing left is for us to approve it. Any questions, concerns, issues on it? Okay. Having no more comments on this, all those in favor approving the contract, say aye. Aye?
I abstain.
You abstain? Okay. Two, one, abstain. Okay, for the Police Department. I know we'd get to you sooner or later. Let me make the motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the request for an appropriation of seventy thousand dollars from the Police Outside Services Fund for the purchase of, for the purpose of purchasing a twenty twenty-six Dodge Durango Pursuit, and forward this request to the Board of Finance for their consideration. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bob, second. Would we like to have a conversation with the Chief of Police on this? The comment I would make is that in the past, I have always been in favor of all cars coming out of the town's budget. I know at least once before, when Chief Purcell was in, in charge of the Police Department, we did agree that one car would come out of the Outside Services Fund. My concern is, is that police cars should not regularly come out of the Police Outside Services Fund. That is for a special fund for capital projects that are unanticipated, and I think all these cars should come out. This year was a particularly tough budget year, with health insurance going up eleven percent, with electricity going through the roof. So the Police Department and the Police Commission was kind enough, after discussions back and forth, to agree to take one car out of the Police Outside Services Fund. I would not like to see this personally become a regular thing that we do every year. I don't, it's not a good precedent. Any concerns or issues?
What, I mean, I'd like to hear like what the need is for it so urgently. I mean, do you, can you wait until the budget's passed?
It was our capital budget request in the, the three-year plan of rotation for the vehicles, which has been explained to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance.
Could you just tell us for the public who you are?
John Flicklesee.
Chief of Police? Okay, thank you.
So at the budget hearings for the Board, with the, with the First Selectmen, then the Board of Selectmen, then the Board of Finance, we agreed to remove it. It's a three-year rotation on the vehicles replacement program to keep the vehicles in a tip-top shape to, so we don't run into any of the breakdowns. Then the vehicles are rotated through the department, through the Detective Bureau, or through, or into out the private duty, and then, or to Town Hall, or any of the other town offices that you need those vehicles that do not have to be in tip-top shape.
Basically, I'd say we cannot ever have cars that are not running twenty-four hours a day. They have to be totally reliable for our day-to-day use of our patrol officers, right?
Right. The rotation is that no vehicle would be running twenty-four hours. However, with the downtime that the, the vehicles are scheduled between eight and sixteen hours a day, seven days a week. One car goes down, another car has to fill in for that, too.
So this is a must-have now?
This is a must-have in this budget year that was cut out.
Out of curiosity, for the, the guys who are out on patrol, the officers that are out on patrol, are their equipment generally one or two years old, or is it, is that where all the new, new vehicles go, is the guys on patrol?
Yes. There is a, there is a whole schedule for replacement based on the patrol vehicle's life, based on administrator vehicle's life. So obviously, the vehicles the administrator gets last a lot longer. They don't have the wear and tear on them, that, you know, but these, this vehicle, these vehicles are going into patrol.
Yep, that's what I would hope for.
Right. And then you rotate after they get older. They rotate into the administrators and. They rotate into the Detective Bureau and then onto private duty. They're marked cars.
They come back to the town after about twelve years and it's six hundred thousand hours on them, right?
Probably less than that. I would say probably like eight years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any further questions, issues, concerns?
And this would then all vetted with the Board of Finance during the budget cycle as well, right?
Yeah.
That's correct. So this isn't going to be a surprise to the Board of Finance?
No, no. Okay, having gone through that and not hearing any other concerns, we have a motion on the board. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries three O. Thank you very much, John.
I got the next one. You want me to wait up here?
Okay. The Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Grant. That's a mouthful. Let me make the motion, then we can have the conversation. The Board of, I make the motion that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Brookfield Police Department's Emergency Service Union, Unit Dive Team to apply for the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Tara. So would you give us a quick description of it for?
So this is a no-match grant, doesn't cost the town a dime. This is our first time applying for this particular grant through the Firehouse Subs. The program has been out for a while, but this is the first time we've tried to utilize it. We're going to use it if we were to get the full amount to replace dive equipment, to replace the dry suits, to replace some of the comms.
This is five dry suits, five sets of comms, and then the controller on the boat.
Right.
For the comms.
Right.
Total of like forty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight, eight fifty-two.
Thirty-eight, sorry. I'm uncomfortable with this.
So one question I had on it was, when I read the documentation that was provided in our packet, there was some commitments the town was making, not money-wise, but participating in certain things. Are those things we do anyhow?
Yeah, there's not, there's no change in anything that we're doing. There's no, there's no requirement, as far as I understand, that we would be anything different than what we already do.
So that's not, that's not burdensome to us.
The equipment's going to be used for, for what is being requested for, and that's.
Yeah, there was a participation in some meetings and some, you know, some.
Dive team.
Dive team training and things like that. And we're doing that anyhow?
Yes.
Okay. I was, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't another burden, a, a non-financial burden.
Yeah, okay, great. Any other questions, concerns, issues? Having said that, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, carries three O. Thank you very much, John. I really appreciate it. Okay, Lotsip Grant Solicitation, Town Hall Campus Master Plan Phase Two. I would make a motion that the Board of Selectmen authorize the expenditure not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars for the preliminary design required to apply for the Lotsip Grant, and to authorize the First Selectmen to sign a commitment letter to fund the final engineering design, as well as any proposed municipal right-of-way or construction costs, if applicable, with funds to come from the Capital Non-Recurring Fund, and if a grant is one, then to apply for funding to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance for any additional town funding required. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second. Discussion on this. So for Lotsip Grants, until this year, you could have preliminary schematics drawn pretty much by almost like Greg Dembowski or Economic Development. He's done a lot of that. Lotsip rules have changed. You now have to have actually engineered designs to even apply for the Lotsip Grant. So what they're trying to do, I think, is carve towns out who are just, say, ooh, give me, you know, forty thousand dollars for this. So they raised the bar significantly. We have already done an initial master plan for the entire Town Hall Campus. This would then just take it that one level further to get it so we can apply for the Lotsip Grant. I think it's a good expenditure. I think a lot of towns will be dropping out because they don't want to spend the money upfront to create these designs. So it'll make our requests, I think, more palatable and desirable and approvable. I'm not sure the word we're looking for there. But it does require the town to spend some money.
What was involved in Phase Two again?
Phase Two, what we're calling a Phase Two. Phase Two is bringing the Silver River Greenway Walk all the way up behind the field, up behind the gazebo, and then up to the parking lot next to the fire station, and then some other amenities. Some tiered seating, right, by the gazebo, you know, when they have concerts and things like that.
Like the amphitheater?
Right, the amphitheater idea. To make it all ADA compliant, which we have to do, which is not really right now. It would allow ADA people to get down to the fields and get to the Silver River Greenway from the second parking lot. If anybody's driven by the police station, you know that Silver River Greenway parking lot is full almost all the time. This would be additional parking for that. I think that's a good idea, and also additional parking for any other events. We have seen, the last time I was at a concert here, with this back lot here where we had the farmer's market, full of cars. Right, we do need additional parking, and I think, I think we should consider this, and I personally think we should approve it so we can create that final design.
Does the cost include a cost estimate for the design?
Yeah, we had a preliminary cost estimate, and that's what we would apply. This will update that cost estimate. So when we apply for the Lotsip Grant, we say how much we're applying for.
Do you remember what that was?
Final number yet. We'd have to get this preliminary design, and that will be part of it.
Do you remember the previous estimate?
I'd have to go from memory. I think it was eight hundred thousand total. I'm not sure. I'm, actually, I'm just picking a number. I don't know.
And when will we know if we, after the preliminary design is done, when would we vote on submitting the grant application?
We would do the preliminary designs, submit the grant application, and then Lotsip takes their time to review them and then come back to us. Usually, I would think we would get the Lotsip final yes or no before the next year's budget season, so in the January, February. Right, they have to review them all and then come back. They haven't told us a specific date yet.
So, so this doesn't give approval to apply for the grant? That would have to come back to the Board of Selectmen?
Correct.
Yeah.
This only gives you the money to do the preliminary design. It would still have to come back here. We would have to approve the grant application.
Right, right.
I think that, that would allow us to have an update on the costs and the design and all of that.
And then say, yeah, we want to do this, or no, we don't. Give us a second, more specific look at the project and say, this is something we want to do.
So now every time we want to try for one of these grants, we have to spend the preliminary design money in order to even apply?
For Lotsip. They really tightened it up. Really tightened it up.
Maybe we need to look at building that into the budget.
Yeah.
Yep, that ought to be a standing budget item.
A certain amount for grant.
For, for grant application funding.
Yeah.
Marshall.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, any further questions, concerns? Okay, take a vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we'll send that to, okay, the Health Department. The Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Renewal. I make a motion that the Board approve the renewal grant application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bob, this is a grant we apply for every year, but we're being a little more careful to make sure that every grant that comes through gets approved by this board, so there's no concerns or issues. Is there any questions or concerns about it?
Yeah, I just, I, I looked at this earlier, and I do not remember this at all.
It has changed. The, it used to, now that we have a full-time health director, we get it on our own, and we have reporting requirements, and it's about eight thousand a year. When you were in office, it was through Newtown, and it was seven thousand a year, and we didn't have any reporting requirements that Newtown did.
So when did we move to Torrington?
I think this is our third year with Torrington.
Yeah, Torrington is managing this on behalf of the state?
Oh, so their role is just about managing this grant?
Yeah, yeah, we don't do anything.
We don't, we don't do, have a relationship with them for our Health Department.
No.
They're just, they're just managing the grant.
They're just managing this grant process.
I was wondering what the Torrington stuff was.
I asked that, too. I said, that doesn't make a lot of sense. They are just managing it on behalf of the state, is my understanding. The grant will come directly to us. We want to keep our health. We want to keep our Health Department. We don't want to be part of Torrington, that's for sure.
So what, why not go to like Newtown Health District for something similar? I'm just trying to figure out how it's coming to us through this Health District.
I believe it changed because we weren't eligible to get it directly or on our own before, when we didn't have a full-time Health Director.
We had a part-time doctor.
And that's what made the change.
Yeah, and that's why it rolled over to Torrington, is our understanding. Okay. Okay, any further discussion on this?
So I'm just, yeah, the language in here is a little concerning, like, for item one, C, with four and five, like, what, what does that mean? So if there's another COVID, you know, what, what does that mean?
Let me turn it up.
Or I saw a sign in the town hall parking lot about flu shots.
Which item did you have a question about?
Just as far as like, provide up-to-date local plans, including the following, so like, if there's another type of a pandemic, you know, mass vaccination plan, like, does that mean we have to adhere to that as a town and everybody needs to be max-vaccinated?
No, it doesn't mean that people have to be vaccinated. It means we have a public health emergency response plan or local emergency operations plan. We just have to keep those up to date and provide to them if they're asked, if they ask for it, right? And Aaron Salin, our Health Director, does all of this now. They're just asking if they request it, we have to give it to them, right? Give copies of our local plans.
I'm still confused about Torrington's role.
Yeah, it's.
To be frank, it sounds like that we're working for them. We have to sign up to their terms and conditions.
Yeah, why do we have to agree to complete the following activities and deliverables?
My understanding is Torrington is the contractor for this, to administer these grants, just like Region Five does it with some of this federal and state grants for emergency planning or police or preparedness, and they're the ones that are the contractor.
What is, what is Region Five?
Well, that's for the, Region Five is the Northeast Region, right?
Okay.
Where we do region-wide planning, emergency preparedness, things like that.
And, and Eric has gone through all these, line by line by line, and says he can handle all this stuff?
Yes.
With what we're doing today? It's not adding additional labor into our team to go do this?
No, it is not. He is comfortable, he can do all of it.
And it's not committing us to do things that we think are inappropriate?
No, no. This is the same grant we've had before, it's just being administered differently.
Well, I heard it was, I, I heard it was, was a grant that was going to Newtown.
Yeah.
It's not a grant we've got before.
Okay. Okay, any further questions, conversation?
Just going back to the vaccination plan. I saw in the parking lot coming in, there's a sign for flu shots. Like, who funds that?
That, there is no funding for that. The flu shots are being done by CVS, and they.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm sorry, ShopRite. I got CVS.
Stop, stop and shop.
Stop and shop. I get the shop, those two mixed up. They will come in and they do not charge the town. If somebody has insurance, they take their insurance, and they are doing one clinic here for residents and one clinic at the senior center for people who frequent the senior center. And that's a good idea. Keep the older people away from the younger people. I think that's a good idea. There's no cost to the town for that.
And we, we talked about that at a prior Board of Selectment meeting.
Yeah.
So if something happens again, going back to that, because I lived it in this building, it was horrible. Actually, I think it started with you. Who started the?
Yeah, it was a year and a half of my life, it seemed like.
Because they were doing this, this mass vaccinations, right here in this room.
Yeah, no, but that was, when we did that, it was the town, we set up vaccination clinics at St. Joseph's School, and we ran those for months, and we vaccinated something like 17,000 people. People came from Branford, people came from all over the state and went to our vaccination clinic. That was run by the town, by Doc and Maureen Farrell and Dr. Farrell and another doctor, I can't remember his name, and they ran that for free for the town, and it worked really, really well. This is a little different. This is Stop and Shop offering to bring their pharmacy here to make it easy for people to get vaccination shots. And I think they also hope people will go then shop at Stop and Shop, right?
Even though we don't have a Stop and Shop.
I know, but it is what it is. Okay, any other questions or concerns on that? So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I'm a no.
You're a no. Two, one. Okay. Can Medicaid Department of Transportation, Project 0174-0475, I'll make a motion that the Board approve the first selectman to sign on behalf of the town the notice to waive a public informational hearing and/or public hearing for this project number 0174-40475. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Bob. So this is, the state is going to be changing their signage and updating their signage on all the roads that they own and control. We do have the right to ask them to come give an information meeting or have a hearing. It's pretty straightforward. They're just updating all of their signs. I don't really see the need to ask them to have a hearing. We could do that if this Board Select chooses to. I just didn't want to sign that and say, no, we don't want a hearing without this Board looking at it quickly.
Do we know anything about what the nature of the change in sign says?
Well, it says here, you know, they're changing their subplates, controlled intersections, mid-block crossing locations, and refresh associated pavement markings. It's, it's, it's pretty straightforward. I think they're just refurbishing what they have now and updating it as part of their overall plan.
Do we know that it's just refurbishing, or do we, I mean, they're not going to come in and say, oh, I've decided you need something new?
Well, they're going to replace and upgrade all existing pedestrian. It's all existing.
Okay.
Right? Nothing new. Because, man, like, town, town center has like 600 signs from the state. It's absurd.
Yep.
Okay.
So why do they need our permission to do that?
No, no, I think it says that we have the right to have, to demand an informational hearing or a public hearing.
This is just asking whether we want to waive the hearing.
Right, and I would say we do, they're just updating. Unless the Board feels differently, I feel like we should sign this and just, we don't need an information hearing, information meeting or a hearing, because they're just upgrading their existing signage.
And crosswalks.
I'm sorry.
And crosswalks.
And crosswalks.
And crosswalks. Well, signage and crosswalks, that's.
You know, I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that?
It sounds like it's pretty dry.
Yeah, the crosswalk in front of the Craft Center needs some attention anyway, so.
It does, I agree with you.
I agree. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that one's not. Okay.
We're on to H now.
We're on to H. The Police Building Ad-Hoc Committee Special Appropriation Request. I would make a motion that the Board approve the request to update 2017 Brookfield Police Special Needs Assessment in the amount of $30,000, with funding to come from the Capital Non-Recurring Fund and forward to the Board of Finance for their consideration. Do we have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this? So if you, if you remember, back in 2017, under Jay Purcell, the chief, the Police Department and Police Commission commissioned a study to look at a new police station to meet the Police Accountability Act and also meet many of the other needs that our Police Department has across the board. This would, we now have a Police Ad-Hoc Committee being chaired by Chief Purcell, that they want to update that study for today, for funding today, what it would cost today. New ideas, new, new rules, new laws, and just bring it up to date. I think this is a very good idea, and it moves the whole progress and the whole process of getting this to referendum to let voters decide more quickly. And we need to do this because people want to know, how much is this going to cost? What's going to be included?
So let me ask a question. On the $30,000, on the one side, it says it's to update the Space Needs Assessment.
Right.
Does that include schematic designs for what we would do?
Yeah.
Does it include multiple options?
Yeah, it does. I think that did. Jay, would you join us for a second?
Or is it just a listing of the space assessment?
Oh, no, 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 it's very, it's, it's, it's in your thing.
No, no, the 2017 one's in here. I'm asking about the new one.
Jay, would you?
Jay Purcell. Jay Purcell, Chair of the Police Building Ad-Hoc Committee. An answer to your question, yes, it would update. We had, the original 2017 project was for an addition renovation.
Yeah.
At, at a certain point, we got a guesstimate on costs for that, and it was higher than we expected. So we said, you know what? It makes sense for us to look at what a new build scenario would cost us and what that would look like. So we spent another $15,000 beyond the initial $25,000 to have a new build scenario evaluated, located, and then a schematic design made. Our committee has worked for the past nine months. We came to you and gave you a little update. We told you we were going to be surveying the employees of the Police Department, which we did, and we have gotten quite a bit of feedback from them in terms of things they think are necessary. There've been ongoing discussions with the Police Administration through one of their members who comes to our meetings on a regular basis. Chief Paglisi has given input, the Police Commission has given input, and what we're looking to do is, is fund an update to that total study, which cost $40,000 at the time, it's eight years old at this point. Bring it up to date, take a look at those things that we found out about, the schematic designs that may or may not work, and, and one of the other factors we need to look at is, in 2017, the Grimes property was not in the possession of the town. It, it is now. That may affect the addition renovation scenario, which we want to present, and it may affect the new build scenario. So we want to totally evaluate that. So they probably have to come in and do a survey, have meetings with us and the Police Department to, to bring the whole thing up to date so that we can then get it out to the town. The next step in this is we're putting together a video right now to show the needs of the Police Department in terms of the Police Accountability Act and accreditation, and then some of the shortcomings of the facility as they exist. That's going to go to the public. At the same time, we want to present these schematics to the public if we can, so they have a complete picture of what the situation is and what it potentially can be.
So the, you're going to have two cases, a new build and a renovate?
That's correct. We're going to update both.
Is the new build of specific location new build, or is there multiple options for that, that you're thinking?
There are options in, in terms of our discussion.
But the schematic design would be the same.
Schematic design would be able to be almost transplanted, we believe.
What about location?
Well, the original design, I think in your packet, you saw the site location for the addition renovation, which would be right, obviously, where the current building is. And the new build scenario was envisioned for right out in back here where the Eddie Patac House used to be, basically where the farmer's market is now. Now that we have possession of the Felix Patac House, that whole concept could change and the layout could change, and we want to evaluate that, see what can, what can be in light of parking needs for the Police Department, vehicle storage for vehicles involved in fatal crashes, active investigations, that sort of thing, which are inadequate now and need to be accounted for. So this would enable us to do all of those things.
So it exclude, I didn't see it in here, I just wanted to make sure it doesn't evaluate the old center school as an option?
It doesn't specifically look at that, but my, the thinking is that the new build scenario, the concept that we come up with based on the way we've looked at things, a couple of different sites in town would be able to be transplanted to any of those sites, because they're all level. Everything's level, one, one level site.
And the purchase of the Grimes property five years ago was directly in anticipation of two things. One, the police station either needing to expand in a current location or putting a new police station there. And the second thing was, it was a pre-existing, non-conforming contractor's yard, and we did not want some contractor coming in there. Joe Grimes did a beautiful job. He took care of that property beautifully. You would not know it's a contractor's yard, but if you've seen some of the contractor's yards, we don't want that right next door. So we bought that property, and it gave us those two options, and I think.
Right, and, and that option was not available when the study was originally done for either the addition renovation scenario or the new build scenario.
Yeah, you had to kind of go a different way.
Take a look at that.
Okay. Because that's not really level with the current police station.
It's a little bit elevated.
Ten feet higher, about, eight feet higher?
Okay.
That moves easily, though. Okay.
And the estimate of $30,000 that you're asking?
That's a best, that's a, that's a best guess. I, I belong to a volunteer, I belong to a volunteer firehouse in Danbury, and we've recently gone out to get a facility needs study done for our, our needs, and that's the ballpark.
Okay.
Okay.
Is this firm the only firm that we got a quote from, or?
No, we, we actively bid that study when it was initially done in 2017. Jakunski-Humes is, is the firm that we, we work with. They, they specialize in municipal building projects, whether they be education, public safety, or municipal town halls, things of that nature. We've worked with them. They've done all the preliminary work on this. I had discussions with the Finance Department and, and Purchasing relative to how we would go about bidding it, whether or not it would make sense and we'd get a better price if we stuck with the firm that we, we did, went through the bidding process with and hired for the initial study, just to update their study. They may have all the surveys and all that stuff that's necessary, so we may get a better price, but, you know, that's, that's got to be looked at and done according to the town rules and regs on, on bidding.
So that's ahead of us, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief Purcell?
We got to get, to keep this one moving. That's kind of my general.
Thanks for all the work you've put in.
Thank you very much.
Have you left?
We got it, we got a good committee.
Okay, great. Yeah, you do, doing great work. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Carrie's three oh. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. I'm still allowed to call you Chief, right?
You can call me whatever you want.
Retired.
Then we move on to updates. I think we gave the update on the cell power.
We got Finance next.
Oh, we got, that's right, we're going to Finance. That's right, thank you. Marshall, would you like to give us an update on Finance?
All right, this is our big meeting this year, this month, because we always have two years to look at. So we're going to first look at 2025. You've got the, the final revenues in there with the green highlights, nothing that needs to be done there unless you have questions. The next one has got the brown highlight on the top for 2025, and we're looking for intra-department transfers. The, we do the transfers every quarter. The, we do the transfers every quarter. They, they can't over expend their budget, although sometimes in the last quarter, we, we work with them to say, okay, if you need this purchase order, where are we going to take it from? So that's what we're cleaning up there. And we would be looking for the Board of Selectmen to approve the column with the pink on top for the intra-department transfers. It's, it's a brown on the highlight of the title, but in the column, it's pink on the top.
I got it. It's not pink. It's gray.
Oh, no. That's inter.
Inter.
It's not pink either.
Intra is the first one, and then inter is the second.
I gotcha. Okay, so they, we need to approve the intra, and the Board of Finance would have to also approve the intra.
Yes, you need to approve, or you need to address, both of them. You don't need to approve them. You want to address both of them. The intra, just the Board of Selectmen, and the inter, the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Finance. Do you want to talk about any questions you might have on the?
And a positive number means they, that we overran the budget?
Yes.
And we need to put more money in there?
Yes.
So, okay. And a negative number means we underran, right?
Yep, and these all balance within the department.
Yeah, I'm just looking at where the big overruns were.
Police, the, the salaries there are, as expected, the overtime. And they need more money in overtime and union wages. However, union wages, we had taken money out before. We just took too much out.
I gotcha.
So that was one big one. Parks and Rec was 35,000. They, they were just moving instead of, from supplies, they're moving to services. That was another big one, but a lot of little ones add up fast here. Fire Department and EMS, Brookfield Volunteer Fire Department, we moved a lot around this, in the EMS. This was the first year that the town was doing the record keeping, or we were converting it over to the town doing the record keeping. And the first year that we worked with them on individual line items in the budget versus one total. So it was a bit of a learning curve. So there's a number of interdepartment, intra-department transfers as we went through that learning curve.
Do we know what we learned on, I'm just looking at the fire. It's a very significant overrun of vehicle registrations and inspections. Do you know what drove that? I'm sorry to pick on a single line. It just, it just seemed like a big number.
Yes, pick on that line because I should have changed the title for some reason. So they have subcategories underneath this, and I've been trying to remember to change those, and I didn't on that one. That's actually vehicle, all of the vehicle things. And for some reason, Munis just picks up the first line, the title of the first line. So that's a total vehicle.
That's all, yeah, but, okay, so what was causing that overrun? Just out of curiosity.
There were two, we're paying for the swivel separately, but there were two big expenditures. Hold on, I just had it with me earlier today. And I, and I have to admit, I don't really know what they mean. Typhoon RC Code RFP Inlet 20D was 13,202, if that means anything to anybody. And then Western Diesel, we paid for Western Star repairs for 10,722. Those were the biggest two in that category.
And the other big thing in here is the Board of Ed, they gave us back 378. And we had given them transfers of 331. So does that mean they actually underran their original budget?
Yes, they did.
Wow, okay. That's, that's good news.
So I think that's in the other column, though. Inter.
That is in the inter. I, I was scanning all the changes, so I'm sorry.
And I can go through the inter if you want to go through that now, or do you want to wait till you?
I've scanned through both columns, so.
So there were, I tried for the inter to kind of divide them on the motion sheet. Legal Services, we needed more money. That had a lot to do with the small cities notices. Purchased Economic Development, that was a taste of Brookfield. Community Development, we always have money to allocate Greg's salary to projects. Some proj, some projects will pay for it and some won't. The Health Department, they had perfect attendance bonuses, but their budget is so tiny, we couldn't find, I mean, they only have about $2,000 otherwise, so we couldn't find someplace else to take it from. The, the Fire Department, we are adding a net of 11,000 to the Fire Department. Brookfield Volunteer Fire Department between Fire and EMS. But the, we also, as part of this process of converting, they used to keep their books on a cash basis, and we've converted it to an accrual basis. So where we would normally have 52 weeks of payroll, they have 53 weeks because the beginning accrual is added in. And then if it's highlighted in orange with a negative, that's where we're taking the money to, to cover that. And then if it's highlighted in yellow, that's where we're taking the money. The Board of Finance has a budget strategy where they're, they're sweeping some of this money out to help pay for some of the capital costs that they couldn't fit in the budget for this year. And that way, using these monies right away for, to move 600,000. So that's the color coding on your schedule.
So what does that mean exactly? Like the 44,000 for the health insurance sweep for budget strategy? What, can you explain that a little bit better, please?
So that's, the total, that's the yellow with a negative adds up to 600,000. The offsetting side is transfer to capital non-recurring for 600,000. That, the Board of Finance has been working with to say, if we had extra money in last year's budget, what would be next, next on our list to spend? And one of the things, for example, they talked about was when we were doing the budget for capital, we couldn't afford to do the senior center all at one time, the air conditioning. And so they divided it into three phases. Well, with this money, they could do all the phases at one time. And so the Capital Committee was making a list of what would be the priorities to, to do next with this money.
And you were specifically asking about this on health insurance?
Yeah.
So this is a savings. We have people, maybe they came and worked for us. We planned for them to have a family. It was only an individual. That cost is, the differential is about $2,500 a month. So we save money on the number of people who signed up for health insurance. And given the number of employees we have, it's going to move around every year. We take a guess, a good guess at where it's going to be. But if we have, in this case, people took up less of our health insurance than we have budgeted, so we get to sweep 44,000. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And if I read the bottom line, Marshall, we're putting $600,000 into the CNR?
Yes, we are.
And, and we're underrunning our, then with that transfer, we're underrunning overall by 243,000? That's going to the fund balance?
Yes, because we want to have it go to the fund balance because we don't want the percentage to, to decrease. Every year, the, the, it's, the percentage is the fund balance compared to the revenue. And every year, the revenue.
But it's a choice on how much I'm putting in CNR versus how much I'm letting go into the fund balance.
Correct.
And this is what the Board of Finance has been talking about, is how to, what to put in the CNR.
That's correct. And, and at their last meeting, they couldn't vote on it, but they were the ones that had suggested 600,000.
Okay, okay, got it. We've been doing a good job of setting money aside and improving our fund balance every year.
Yeah, we have.
And that's not including, how much is going to the fund balance from overruns in revenue?
About, let me, let me open that up. About a million.
Okay, so that also goes to the fund balance?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So let me make a couple motions here if we're good with that. I would make a motion that the Board approve the intra-department transfers for year end 2025, as noted on the budget versus actual expenditure report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Bob, any further questions on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carries three O. I then would make a motion on interdepartment transfers, that the Board approve the interdepartment transfers for year end 2025, as noted on the budget versus actual expenditure report, and forward to the Board of Finance for their consideration and approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on that?
I just have a quick question. When, what was like the drop dead time for getting all this in for closeout for 2025?
We tried to do it for September when the auditors came in. I think they were here September 9th.
So we want to get the auditors in and have them sign off before we do this.
So there's no penalty or anything because we're beyond that time? Like what?
No, they, they know, and every, last year it happened in October, too, that they came in, they did their stuff. They said, whatever's approved, send us a new file, and we'll upload it to our, our data.
So that's a good, good question.
But it was in the draft financial statements. I think it was 810 at the time. And then while they were here, the Board of Finance dropped it to 600, and so that, when they left, they had the 600,000 number.
Okay. Okay, so we've addressed that. We made a motion. We've got a second, I believe. Bob, you second it. All those in favor of the interdepartment transfers?
Aye.
Aye, carries three O. Okay.
The next, we're talking about 2025. It's got a pink highlight at the top. And this is capital non-recurring, the capital non-recurring fund closing out projects. The biggest, we would close out projects and we would add 311 to the fund balance. And the biggest one is last year with Eversource, we set aside some money because Eversource told us July 1st that our rates are going up and you might pay 25% or more in increases. We all had that on our personal one as well. So we set aside money in case we needed it, 250,000, and then we used it within the budget. We did not need that. The other big ones, the Historical Society, the roof replacement. There was a rebate that we earned on one of the pieces of equipment, or, on something there. So we, that came in under budget. The backfield deep cleaning and reconditioning, just the timing of putting that aside for the high school and redoing the high school, combined with moving that into operating, we are closing that project.
So we ran out of time?
And we, we didn't spend it. We, we have no choice but to close it. Correct. But that's why we didn't spend it. The Town Hall Comfort Stations, that, that, we had 29,000, but then we got a grant from Steep. And so we didn't use the 29,000. We kind of didn't use it. Those, the, the, the 29,000 project is, we're closing, but we need to put some in the match for 6,776.
That's the one we folded into the pickleball court?
Pickleball, so.
So it saved us some money.
Yep, yep, I got it.
So the net amount is that we saved about 21,000. Those are the, the biggest amounts. There's small amounts for anywhere down to a dollar. So we'd like, I'd like you to consider a motion to approve these transfers and send them to the Board of Finance for year end 25.
Okay, so I make a motion that the Board approve the proposed transfers between projects in a capital non-recurring fund for the year end 2025, as shown on the attached report, and forward to the Board of Finance for their consideration and approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
No.
Questions?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carries three O. Let me make the motion on the next one. So bonded capital project, I make a motion that the Board approve the proposed transfers between projects in the bonded capital projects fund, as shown on the attached report for the year end 2025, and forward to the Board of Finance for their consideration and approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Bob, a second. So Marshall, you want to give us a quick overview on that?
Yes, these are.
The blue one, right?
The blue one. The Streetscape Phase 3, we want to close that, that the financial part of that is done. We, we, you'll see on the reports, we still have Streetscape Phase 2 on the reports. Even though it all clears out, we're still waiting for the state for receivables. And we contact them, it's been five, five years? The, we're, we're up to contacting them every month and that, reminding them that we're still out here. And they let us know they're going to look at it. So you'll still see these on the reports until we collect the final receivable. But Streetscape Phase 3, we're closing out the maintenance building improvements, closing out, BHS closing out, BHS tennis court replacements closing out. Guidance Wing rooftop, we're adding to that. We, we had a number that was wrong in our report because I look at why did our budgetary controls, why do we need more money there? And that was our reporting. We told them they had more money than they, than they thought. That was just an error. An original electric service replacement, we took money from that twice. But then the final part came in and it cost more. So we're, we want to give them back money, but it's still less than what we took from, from them. So in total, we would be closing out these projects and putting 61,960 back into fund balance.
To the fund balance?
Correct.
Any other questions, concerns on that?
What is this remove and replace underground tank at the high school?
Yeah, remember that oil tank in the front parking lot as you pull into the, where the guidance ring is? Yeah. Talk about that for years, too. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Any further issues, concerns, questions? All those in favor? Aye, carries three O.
There's two other 2025 reports. One just, we don't need any action on them. One is purple on top showing the grant fund. And one is yellow on top showing the police funds, the outside service and.
Yeah.
Asset forfeiture. That's it for 2025. Any questions on any of those?
No.
2026, revenue, green on top, nothing that you need to do. Expenditures, brown on top. We're not asking for any interfund transfers, just intrafund, some small ones within the, within the departments totaling 9,560 and 80 cents of increases and decreases, and these all go within the same department.
What was the total there, Marshall?
That's 905,000, 9, $9,500 plus and $9,500 minus?
That is correct.
Where's the total on the tally?
Well, it totals to a zero because it's a plus and a minus, right?
That's correct.
All these up, all the pluses and minuses.
You have to kind of look at them, so.
Yeah.
You have to use the sum if function.
The sum if negative, sum if positive. Okay. Advanced Excel.
So are you looking at this for year end 2026? I'm looking at 2025 here.
Yeah, this is 2026.
Year end.
This is 25.
It's through.
Did you say 26?
Well, it says 26. Here, year end 26.
Okay.
And this is, the expenditures through 9, 18, 25, so it's current. But it's the 2026 budget year.
Okay. Into, so I make a motion that the Board approve the intra-department transfers for year end 2026, as noted on the budget versus actual expenditure report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carry, carry three O. And then we move the capital non-recurring, right? Let me make the motion. I make a motion that the Board approve the proposed transfers between projects in the capital non-recurring fund for the year end 2026, as shown on the attached report, and forward to the Board of Finance for their consideration and approval. Do I have a second? You have a second.
Now, does this pick up all the things we talked about tonight?
Yeah.
I will show you where.
That's why I wanted to push this till after we did all the presentations, so you would have been doing all those presentations.
Makes a lot of sense. So the changes in 2026, we've got, before we had the million-dollar grant for the blighted property at 20 Station Road. We put $120,000 aside. The grant requires us to pay soft costs of 60,000. So there's 60,000 that we shouldn't need to pay, so we're, we're taking that out. And the best estimate is of the 60 that's left, that we won't need to use all that. we won't need to use all that either, but for now, we're just taking out the, the sixty. The assessor reval, that she went out to bid for that. There's some, um, um, add-ons that, um, of the add-ons that were offered that she would like to add, um, uh, three things. One is, um, um, taking a look at the, um, uh, Candlewood Lake properties and you could look at them from the water to, to determine who has a water view 'cause that is, uh, makes the house more valuable. The second add-on is a week of litigation support for when it, um, um, comes to, to, um, people challenging their assessment. And, uh, then a function of using AI with the MLS data to pull information out of there to help to get a better assessment. And the, the total of those, um, costs twelve thousand, but she was under budget by a thousand. So she would, is requesting eleven thousand dollars more. Police vehicles, they're just moving three hundred and nineteen from one vehicle to the other. The thirty thousand for the designs that we just talked about, um, uh, is in here. A little bit more is needed for the air conditioning in the police server room and the parks and rec department, uh, to replace the floors. Ralph from Public Works points out, this is the first time he's asked for more because they've stripped him of putting in any contingency and he's, um, not thrilled with the idea here. Town beach roof repairs, they're closing that project, came in under budget. Still River Greenway Extension Engineering Design. We had sixty-two thousand in there. And then, uh, it's, um, designed through Westcog, that they're trying to do it for all the towns combined. And so they needed sixty-two thousand from Brookfield. And then they got this raise grant, um, so they said, oh, we don't need sixty-two, we need thirty-one. And then they, um, got better estimates and reallocated who's paying what. And now they're, they're back up that we need eighty-three thousand.
Yeah, and a big part of this was, in that thirty-one thousand number, they had applied for a second grant to go in association with the five million dollar raise grant. They did not get it. So the allocation per town went up because they didn't get that.
But this is to do this end-to-end Greenway?
From Long Island Town to the Mass border, is my understanding. And they will do a Still River Greenway design all the way, so we will get.
So how much are they actually assessing the towns for that versus paid for out of their own budget?
Well, they.
I thought they were gonna give us money to do it.
Plus, we've already spent so much money assessing like our extension to New Milford.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm reacting to this. It's the biggest number on the chart and, uh, and it's like a complete surprise.
So they got this raise grant about a year ago.
Mm-hmm.
We've been talking, they've been going back and forth with the towns, and they originally told us, and I think we've discussed this, that we've, we've gotten this raise grant, that the grant, the raise grant does not pay the entire amount. There is a town match to it. For us now, it's eighty-two thousand dollars. That will design from the Danbury border all the way to the New Milford border, including our current Still River Greenway. If we went out to design this ourselves, I think we would be paying a lot more. They're going to hire a company to do the entire project. And it is payable over two years. Our assessment for this, that would be about forty-one thousand dollars per year. My thinking is that we should just, because we would be on the hook next year, that we commit the money now. 'Cause you can't be like, a little bit into it. If you're halfway in, you're all the way in. Does that make sense?
Well, we've already done the design study from, I think, four corners north, so what happens to that?
No, we, this would be an actual plan, actual, alright, put pilings here, okay, put it here, okay, buy an easement here. That plan from, uh, that the committee had done was a conceptual plan. Okay, we're gonna go behind, uh, Newberry Village, then we're gonna cross the road, and then we're gonna go up to New Milford. There wasn't a full.
Four, uh, the, four options. One was to go on, uh.
One was to go up Laurel Hill, right.
Yeah, and so put a sidewalk down the left and right.
Right, and that was a plan, that was a plan that they brought to us.
They were like different courses of action.
Right, right.
All feasible.
And if we had chosen one of those, we then would've had to hire a company to actually write the plan.
So I guess my question is, are these people going to take a look at what we've already done and maybe give us a discount instead of paying for it again?
Yeah, but what we've already done is conceptual and this will actually be the design. The engineer's saying, okay, this is what you need to put here. This is how wide the path will be. This is material the path will be. This will cross, there's a bridge here. Here's the design of the bridge. This is a complete design of the actual project, so it's executable. The previous one was the plan to create a design. Does that make sense?
So which plan are they gonna design?
This is gonna design a Greenway from Long Island Town all the way to the Mass border.
I just think we're throwing good money after bad.
I know, that's confusing.
I find it very confusing, Steve, to tell you the truth. I just.
Well, you wanna, you wanna table this and we can have.
So, so, so the thing that I find confusing is that it's a big number for a town like us.
Yeah.
Eighty thousand dollars is a big number for a town like us. We spend a lot of time looking at eighty thousand dollars.
Sure.
And this is coming in from some higher authority and said, you gotta just put eighty thousand down. I don't know if this is, how much are they putting toward the Brookfield design?
They don't put any. They just manage the Greenway.
Yeah, I understand. So how much are other, uh, how much, is all of this just going to the Brookfield plan? Or is this going into some general bucket?
No, what they've done is.
That they do to fund the whole, the whole plan.
They did an allocation by town?
Yeah, okay.
For the whole plan.
So what would it cost for us to fund just our town, for our portion?
If we were hiring someone?
Yeah.
I think it would be more than eighty thousand dollars to get a complete final design.
Would, could, would it be possible, I think your thought of tabling it for the time being is a good one, but, um, I, would it be possible to get a more holistic view of the funding of this project, right? And how much Danbury's paying and how much Newark's paying and.
Yeah.
And what do we all get out of it? How's the design gonna work? You know, what is it that we're getting on Tara's question, over and above what we've already done, right? And it may be that we don't have enough specificity and that's okay.
Right now.
I don't, I don't understand it enough for that kinda money to be set aside, so.
So I would make a motion that we table this, and depending further information, and we'll get information from Westcog about the raise grant.
Well, do we wanna, do we wanna table just this one item, or do we wanna table the whole motion?
I would table just the one item.
That means we have to adjust.
Does that make sense?
I, I've got it adjusted over here.
Huh?
I have it adjusted on my screen. I can tell you the totals.
Okay, thanks.
So I, I, we approved it, approved this with the exception of this, the grant for the Greenway.
Right, which would be then a total of?
It would be, um, uh, the net would be adding to fund balance, um, oh, no. The net would be adding three thousand one forty-eight to fund balance instead of taking forty-five thousand eight eighty-five.
Okay. And why don't we do that?
I think that's a lot logical thing to do. It's just, it's just a big number that we don't have enough.
We'll just have another conversation. Well, we do have time, Mark.
It's just confusing. I don't understand it well enough. The, the whole connection to Danbury in itself is a, is a problem.
True Danbury is.
That's why we started looking at going north first, because the Danbury to Brookfield connection has its own set of.
I mean, I, I, I love the thought of connecting us all the way from the sound of the border, right? And that's a, that's a great idea. I just don't understand it enough, so.
Yeah, and about six years ago, we did get the right of the state. The state owned all the property along the Still River. We now own it. The state gave it to us. So it's, for us, it's not gonna be really anywhere near as hard to get to the Danbury border as it is gonna be for Danbury, to get through Danbury with a Greenway.
Yeah, so that would tell me that Danbury's portion would be a lot higher than eighty thousand, right? And that's why, the sort of thing I'd like to understand.
Yeah, it is a lot higher.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we do that and then we'll get more information. We'll get the town allocations. We'll get perhaps somebody from Westcog to come in and discuss it.
How they came up with the town allocations. Why are we, why is our share eighty, right? I mean, that's, that would be my fundamental question. Right? And maybe the answer is, oh, we did it based on complexity and, you know, what has to get done.
I think there were a couple factors, population, uh, distance, the amount of, you know, the actual amount. I, I can get that.
Yeah.
And then, if you look on this, the town hall master plan, uh, we just talked about sixteen thousand and this only shows fourteen thousand five because we already had fifteen hundred sitting there. So this is just the delta. So if you table that one, um, this would, um, uh, need increases of sixty thousand fifty-five dollars, decreases of sixty-three thousand two oh eight. It would add to our fund balance three thousand one forty-eight.
One forty-eight, okay.
So essentially moving things around, but not affecting.
And this, uh, just to ask my question again, and this covers every single thing that we talked about at tonight's meeting?
Yes. Uh, the hundred and seven, you don't see separately in here because that will, is not pulling from fund balance. That'll be a transfer in as a revenue. But, um, so that one you won't see.
That makes sense.
But the other ones we talked about tonight are all in here. Okay?
Okay, that makes sense to me. Okay, so we have a motion. I amended the motion.
You have to second, uh, I'll second, I'll second the amendment.
Bob seconds my amendment to remove the eighty-one thousand, eh, what's the exact number? Eighty-one thousand?
No, no, remove the addition of forty-nine thousand.
Thirty-three.
Oh, thirty-three.
Forty-nine, oh, thirty-three for the Greenway.
Which would result in the numbers as mentioned by, uh, by Marsha.
As mentioned by, okay, we've got that. Do, and we have a second to the amendment.
Yeah.
So all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye? All in favor of the actual motion?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Got that, thank you.
Good discussion.
All right.
Christmas before we get.
The final report, I know some of you are disappointed by that. The final report is, uh, got blue highlights on the top and it's for year end twenty twenty-six. A year-to-date, 'cause we do these quarterly. Uh, this is for bonded capital projects. These are all twenty twenty-six approved bonded projects. They worked on these really fast. The dump truck, we need two thousand sixty-three dollars more. Again, Ralph not happy that he doesn't have contingencies anymore. The high school server upgrade, we wanna close it and take out the two dollars that's remaining. The center school, uh, the middle school project, uh, server upgrade, we wanna close the project and take out the four dollars remaining. And that would be, um, um, two thousand fifty-seven dollars. It would come out of fund balance.
Okay. Okay. Marsha, I've said I make a motion that the Board approve the proposed transfers between projects in the bonded capital projects fund, as shown on the attached report for the year end twenty twenty-five, and forward to the Board of Finance for their consideration and approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three, oh, okay.
Aye.
Okay, I think that's it for that. Cell tower, um, updates. We did the cell tower update. The Iroquois gas compressor was still waiting for DEEP to make a decision as to whether they will grant an adjudicatory hearing. We hope they will. There are a number of groups and individuals who have applied for it. I think what we're asking for is very, very reasonable. Electric compressors, ambient air testing, what else am I missing? Better security.
And onsite presence.
And on, yeah, and onsite presence. Um, so we'll see. Hopefully, they will grant the adjudicatory hearing. As soon as we get that, if we do get that, we will get it out to the residents. Okay. Any, where are the questions on that? Are they good? Okay. Consent agenda. I would make a motion that the Selectmen approve items A through E on the consent agenda and those who are comprised of the Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes. Driveway bond releases, excavation bond releases, and employee changes, which Justin Comer is a police officer we hired effective nine eight twenty-five. James Brady, a police officer who joined us in nine twenty-nine, uh, twenty-five. April Malkin, part-time tax collector aide, effective nine two twenty-five. And Kerry Law, part-time human services administrator, effective eight twelve twenty-five.
Just for clarity, human services administrator, is that the HR department or is that in the senior center?
No, it's in the senior center, social services.
Okay.
We changed the name of that, so.
That's certainly confusing, Tom.
It's not in our HR department. Okay. Having said that, I made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Bob seconds. Any questions, concerns, or issues on that?
Yeah, I think you're missing an employee, new hire, effective eight twenty-five for Attorney Holsberg.
He's not an employee. He's a contractor. He's a contract worker. He's not an employee.
It's not what the contract says. And you never shared the contract with us?
We can.
That's required by charter. You should.
Certainly will do that, but, um, I, he's not an employee.
He's paid a salary.
No.
Hourly wage.
He's paid as a contractor. We do not pay, we do not give him benefits. We do not give him medical. We do not give him time off.
You have plenty of employees who don't get those things.
Um, if that's the case, every single consultant we would hire, we would have to put them on here.
He's not even authorized to be employed by the town.
Uh, yes, he is, by the Board of Selectmen.
No, he's not, Steve.
Well, that's your opinion.
Yeah, we voted on it.
We voted on it and we approved it.
So is he or is he not an employee of the town?
He's a vendor, not an employee.
There's, there's no such thing as a vendor.
He's not that type of employee.
Spelled out in the charter. Where does it say vendor in the charter? And he's not allowed to be special counsel because you're not incapacitated or absent.
No.
We hire all kinds of special counsel, bond counsel.
If, if my correspondence was included in here, you would see why that he's unauthorized to be paid by the town in Brookfield.
That's your decision.
Excuse me?
You mean, according to you.
According to the charter?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
I disagree. And I've already opined and advised the Board.
You have not opined.
They made the decision.
Where's your, your opinion in writings, Tom?
Back when the decision was made.
Yeah.
You never opined in writing.
Yes, he did.
I've emailed you ad nauseam and have had, received no response.
I'm sorry. The, the town attorney has responded and said it was legal.
So Attorney Holsberg is not an employee of the town?
No, no.
Special counsel, employed by the town.
He can't be special counsel according to the charter because you're not incapacitated or absent.
No, no, no. The charter allows the Board of Selectmen at any time that we want.
Your contract with him says he usurps the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Ethics. That's what the contract says. So is he special counsel or does he replace the Board of Ethics and the Board of Selectmen?
He's not replacing any boards. He's special counsel that was hired by the Board of Selectmen.
Hired? As what?
Or retained. Like other special counsel are retained.
That charter does not allow that.
We, yes, it does. We've hired a number of special counsel. We hired Haller and Sage. We've hired a number of different special counsels when there was a conflict of interest.
Your contract with Attorney Holsberg says that his role is to replace both the Board of Ethics and the Board of Selectmen.
He's not replacing.
Then the contract is wrong and null and void and nor, Steve doesn't have the authority to sign a contract and turn into that kind of agreement with him, according to the charter.
Okay, with, with respect, we're talking about.
New hires.
Well, I'm sorry, we're talking about the consent agenda, which has employees. He's not an employee. I'll call the question.
I agree.
He's not an employee.
Call the question.
Okay, we're moving on. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Four hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour.
Aye.
Aye, carries two. Are you in favor or no?
I just said no.
You said no? Okay. Okay, uh, we have one more item. The youth commission, uh, the rec, the motion is that the Board appoint Christina Zimmerman, D, Democrat, as a member of the youth commission with the term ten six twenty-five to two one twenty-seven, as recommended by the DTC. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, I have a clarifying question. Earlier in the meeting, we had a confusion about whether there was an opening for a member or an alternate. Uh, let me just ask your assistant whether she.
It's a member.
It's a member?
It is a member, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we got that right. Um, any?
Who is she replacing?
Sean Turner. So I saw her email today and I just, I mean, it sounds like an ethical issue and I don't understand why somebody would just lie about their resume.
She, she, her, her letter today says she didn't lie about her resume. She says she has a minor, she does have a minor in, in statistics, uh, despite what the member of the public told us. And, uh, and that, uh, and, and, and. public told us, and, and that, and, and, and that she's not lying to us.
No.
Now, I did hear, I did hear that she made an error in responding to the school administration, she wasn't applying for the job, she was asked to take that job, and quickly, they said, could you tell, share your, your background, and she called it a double major, she apologized for that, it wa, that was an error, but in her letter to us today, she says she does have a minor, and that her, her university did not put it on the transcript, and so, and that all of the courses that met that minor were in the, were in the sociology department, so, I'm willing to accept that statement from her.
I am too. I am too.
I have the transcript.